This meeting is being videoed by Norton Media, Norton Cable Access, and we'd like to ask if anybody else is recording this meeting, let us know. So we will stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we will start with the minutes from the January 23 meeting. Have people had time to review the minutes?
Yes.
A motion to approve the minutes from the January 23 meeting?
Yes.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. So Sheri will do warrants.
The bond warrants were reviewed and approved, January 23, 2020, $168,768.89. I wish to add to that the public record.
Thank you. And we will open it up to Cooper and Caroline for our student representative updates.
All right. Well, February break is right around the corner, so we're all waiting on that. I think about eight, six school days left, so we're counting down the days.
Counting down the minute.
So at the LG, their literacy night was on the 30th, and all of the literacy activities were focused on the book, If You Give a Pig a Pancake by Laura Nemiroff. So that sounds a lot fun. And then tonight, the second and third graders are being invited to their own literacy night. So that's what we're about. At the JCS, they had the preschool open house on the 29th, and they had grade three biography, biography breakfast. Sorry, it was the third grade biography breakfast last Friday, and parents were invited to see the students' presentations. They also celebrated the World Read Aloud Day yesterday with a whole-school read-aloud. And there's also the Providence Bruins Night next Friday, which I'm going to when I'm at the JCS. That's really cool to read about. And then at the YL, this Friday, the YL is having Kelly Pirati from Think Kindness coming in to do two presentations to each grade on kindness. Kelly is a fifth-degree black belt, and she'll talk about the power of being nice. Hopefully not with physical movements. She's going to challenge the students to a 15-day kindness challenge where the YL will be charged with performing 5,000 random acts of kindness. With the help of the YL Student Council, they'll be keeping track and monitoring each classroom and each grade's progress.
Great. A lot is happening at the middle school. On Thursday, the middle school hosted a visiting team from New England's League of Middle Schools, and the team was a part of the process to determine if MMS will retain the designation of an N E L M S spotlight school. I tripped over that when I was practicing. Currently, there are only six schools. No, okay, thank you. Currently, there are only six schools in Massachusetts and 27 in all of New England that have this title. The visiting team expressed that they were very impressed with the students and staff at the middle school. In about three weeks, we'll hear back to see and receive feedbacks, including recommendations and anything like that. This Saturday at Wheaton College, the middle school students will be taking a part in the Second Annual Math Madness Game. The students are invited to go and watch the Wheaton Women's Basketball Team at the Haas Athletic Center for their one o'clock game against Emerson. Students are encouraged to attend and will be given math packets if they attend, which can be turned in for extra credit. It's a great opportunity to blend athletics and academics while showing support with a great group of local athletes and community partners at Wheaton College. And at the high school, prom tickets are now on sale. The girls' track team just were named TBL All-Stars, so that's very exciting. The junior and senior class had a presentation on texting and driving, which was really informative and a lot of people took seriously, which was great. And then we had Thumbs Up Thursday, where you wore the ring that TDA bought for the whole school that said "Texting Kills." And if you were seen wearing the ring, you got a raffle ticket and were put in to win AirPods.
Yeah.
And neither of us won.
That's true.
Pretty cool. Unbelievable. Last night's hockey game was Teacher Appreciation Night, and a couple of Norton High School students' art will be featured at the Patriots Place Art Show from February 14 to 16 at the Artist Studio. Parent-teacher conferences were last Thursday, and Triumph Coffee House was last Friday, and I heard Cooper did a phenomenal job performing.
I'll try my best. If you can ever catch it, it's, they're always a lot of fun. There's a library town at the high school, lots of singing, occasional poetry and jokes, new stuff every night, every time it happens.
We'll make sure to get you to the next date.
Oh, I did a, I did a poem that I wrote like three hours before. It's good fun. And then I did a dramatic reading of Billie Eilish's "Bad Guy"
Nice.
with some piano accompaniment, so.
Wow.
Oh yeah, a lot of fun.
Thanks. I didn't see any of those videos on YouTube or anywhere.
So do your parents go?
Oh, they have in the past.
All right. Well, you told me parents don't go.
Eight parents that they go.
My feelings are hurt.
Do the same, please.
You know, you're not laundry.
Thank you for offering us great updates of what's happening, fun things at the school. Caroline, I'll sort of put you on the spot. You didn't sort of mention that you were also, I think, if I'm not mistaken, given the title of something for the TBL.
Oh, yeah, I was named a TBL All-Star for volleyball.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You really have set high standards for your senior classmates, so thanks both.
You.
That's the goal.
That's the goal. Big shoes to fill. Thank you.
Are you guys setting up interviews for your replacements? Are you doing the phone call?
Oh, I'm not sure if that has happened yet for replacements for us.
Oh yeah, I guess not.
We'll make sure to vet them.
Oh yeah.
I got a connection at the FBI background.
For sure.
A little interrogation.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to recognition of Project 351, Norton Middle School's student participation.
So it's always my pleasure every year, as we all know, to recognize a student that has been involved here at the middle school. So tonight, we'd like to recognize the Norton Public Schools Norton Middle School, Helen Russell, for participation in the 2020 Project 351 program, and it's signed by me. So thank you for representing us very, very much. We appreciate all the work that you've done. Congratulations. And I know Mr. Goldstein has probably bring us up to date on what took place.
Sure, absolutely, with a little help from Helen, I hope. So, so every year, I come before this group and kind of give you all an update about Project 351, which is an organization that's near and dear to my heart. There is an alumni sitting here in the room. Cooper was, you know, our Project 351 ambassador five years ago. And so, as you can see, there's pictures to fill. So in any case, but, you know, every year around Martin Luther King Junior Weekend, we, there is the kickoff of Project 351's service year. And so every year, we are tasked with sending a representative from our district, an eighth grader, a worthwhile eighth grader. And this year is an easy choice. Helen's, you know, proven herself to be, you know, far and away, you know, a leader in many regards. And so it was easy for me to choose her. And so we went to Boston for the day, and we engaged in a day of service. And it was, it's always a great experience. It's, it's very eye-opening. I'll let her talk a little bit more about it. So can you just tell them kind of how the day went? And just, you know, what, you know, was involved?
Yeah, it was a really welcoming group of people, a ton of eighth graders from Massachusetts. And my group specifically, our service year leader was Anne Frank. So we got to learn about what she did, what she contributed, how to look up to her. And we, we went to the Pine Street Inn and contributed in making food for homeless people. And it was, it was really great being able to help people.
So it was, it was a fascinating experience. For those who haven't been to Pine Street Inn, it's, it's a massive operation. It's like its own little city there, and the work they do there is phenomenal. And it's actually got a special connection here to Norton. I don't know if those of you who know, but the executive director actually lives in Norton and is a former student here many years ago. So, so it was great to be there for the day. We start the day every year in Faneuil Hall, where the governor, you know, usually addresses the assembled crowd along with some other, you know, folks. And so, you know, and then the day concludes at the Kennedy Library. So just two great, you know, places to gather people together, two iconic institutions, you know, in locations in the city. And so it's great to be able to, you know, be a part of that. And it's, it's great when you get to be able to spend time with, you know, young people who obviously care and, you know, show a lot of promise. So it's a, it's a pleasure. So, and we're wearing our shirts today. And this year's theme was, do you recall what it says on the back of your shirt?
Good Trouble.
Good Trouble. And so for those of you who don't know what that's a reference to, Congressman John Lewis, who was pivotal in the civil rights movement in the 60s, who's still a congressman from Georgia. He coined that phrase. And so the idea this year was to get yourself into good trouble, meaning, you know, do good for the community, you know, kind of raise, you know, raise a little ruckus, that kind of thing. So that was the theme for this year, so.
It's great. Nice job.
Thank you very much.
Cool.
All right.
You'll do or not?
Yeah.
Mom, come on up. You gotta be in the picture, come on. We know you want to, you want to be in the picture.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we will move on to recognition of our very own Caroline, the Norton High School student for excellence at the Annual Lions Club Speech Competition. Mr. Kent Taylor.
Caroline, if you'd join us? Yep. Giving a speech to the speech giver. Good evening, my name is Kent Taylor, and I have had the privilege to work with Ms. Caroline Daly in the Lions Club Youth Speech Competition for the last four years in which he has competed in. The speech competition consists of at least four levels a year, including the school, local, zone, regional, and state levels. And there have been years where some of the levels have been combined. The competitors must write a five-to-eight-minute speech, and each level gets progressively harder. By the third level of the competition, the competitors have to be completely off-script and have it memorized. Which is super hard. If they miss any lines, they are deducted points. They are assessed quantitatively on a rubric in the categories of delivery, effectiveness, and content. Each year, there's a different statewide topic. The topics Caroline has competed in have been the following. As a freshman, being politically correct, is it taken too far? As a sophomore, volunteerism, what does it mean to you? As a junior, integrity, what does it look like? And this year, what is heroism? As a freshman, she competed at the school, local, and regional levels, and no freshman has come close to accomplishing what she has. Caroline, sophomore and junior year, she won the local, school, zone, and regional levels and made it all the way to the state championship against four other competitors from around the state. Sophomore year, she was second overall at the state championship. In junior year, she was the state runner-up in her final year here at Norton High School, tier, and unequivocally the best orator in school history. She thinks it's funny when I say that. It's true. Once again, Caroline has won the school, the local, and the regional levels and has made her way to the state championship, which we, which she will compete in in April on the last Saturday. Caroline's incredible run has amassed a total earnings north of $4,300 in her high school career so far, with another at least $500 coming this April for just, just for showing up and competing.
Just for showing up.
Yes. Caroline's talents are undeniable. Her ability to command a room and make a difference through her storytelling, historical references, and overall tone is beyond her years. Her parents and extended family have been a great resource for her in terms of emotional support, editing, and coaching. Her entourage throughout the years has grown large, including her aunts, her grandparents, the Norton Lions Club, the Norton Community Lions Club members, and of course, her incredible parents Judy and Patrick, who are here with us tonight. So thank you for that. One of the perks of being a teacher and a coach and working in a social service profession is I get to meet so many inspirational people in my career. Caroline will be one of those people that has made an enormous impact on me and my profession. And her legacy will always remain, including her purple signature on my newly-refinished and white-painted lectern sitting in my classroom, where all the years of practice happened and the memories were made. Her freshman year in class, her nickname quickly became Dr. Daly due to her insight and intelligence, outside of the fact that she enjoys wearing scrubs, and she is already a CNA, as most of you know here, as a senior in high school and plans on studying nursing. She serves as a senior class president, captain of the volleyball team, and also an All-Star, found out tonight, president of the English Honor Society, president of the Science Honor Society, and is a member of every honor society at Norton High School. Caroline, your work ethic is undeniable. Your tenacity is unwavering. And finally, you are an inspiration to everyone around you. It's been an honor work with Ms. Caroline Daly the last four years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully all, I think the competition in April, the fourth Saturday in April, is in Mansfield this year. So feel free to go check her out. She is unbelievable. You will never see anything like this, I promise you. I cannot be there, and it kills me because I will be in Peru. So when we found out the date, what was it, two weeks ago, three weeks ago? Ugh. I was crying probably as much as everyone in the audience every time you give a speech, so. But I know you're gonna do great. So Caroline, you couldn't have said it better. I think there's a lot of folks, not only in this room, but I know your peers that look up to you. But I want to recognize you tonight for your continued excellence in the Lions Club Speech Competition. And not only for your individual success, but how you represent not only Norton High School, but also Norton Public Schools.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Mom, Dad? Come on. Dad, I know, I saw the rolling of the eyes. I know you really want to do this. Congratulations. I want her to be as good as Caroline.
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor, I have nothing for you today, but I want to tell you not only for recognizing her, but your work with her should not go unrecognized. So thank you.
I really couldn't have done it without coaches like you.
Appreciate it. Yep. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Best part of my job.
I came with my parents, so I have to leave.
I came with her.
Wait, what was your excuse for leaving?
Caroline, we know they would have.
I came with my parents.
I came with her parents too, so.
Just to study. So they will let you go. I wouldn't have me. I have four of them.
Email them.
Okay. Do you have the videos?
It's not really legal. It's not really allowed.
So, do I have a video from the recent? I think one of my.
We have one from prior, but not currently. We're not allowed to put that.
Well, if you can.
Right, but the prior years? Yes.
You email them to me?
Yeah.
I think we just have last years.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
What was the date of the competition?
It does change it.
Fourth Saturday in April. I think it's going to be in Mansfield at the Holiday.
When I get the actual specifics, I can let you guys know.
That would be great.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Because it's close by.
I promise it's worth the hour of going over there, for sure. It is.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
So we're going to move to the vote to approve changes to the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan.
So this is in no way as exciting as that. I promise you, I cried listening to that. This is not going to make you cry. So you just voted probably a month ago to approve the bullying intervention plan. And after that, I did some training with the principals. And one of the things that we came across is that some of the language kind of tied their hands. So page 11, I just gave you the updated piece. But on page 11 of the plan, under Responding to a Report of Bullying or Retaliation, we just want to change the language from prior to beginning the investigation of a report of bullying or retaliation from the principal immediately notifying a parent that we would do it, notify the parents within 24 hours. And the reason for that is that the principals need to be able to talk with students and gather evidence. And some of the concern that arose was that some of the evidence could disappear. So we just want to untie their hand and let them do their job and conduct an appropriate investigation. So parents would be notified, but it would be within 24 hours rather than.
And you two need to vote on it.
Any questions, comments? So we will ask for a motion to approve the recommended changes.
Correct. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we did have the review and vote to approve the 2021, 2022 school calendar. Mrs. O'Neill is going to share some updates or share that with us. The school committee will take it under advisement, and we'll postpone that to a later date. So we're going to move on to FY '21, the board's very budget.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gallagher. I wanted to provide some changes that, as you know, we've tried to make and tried to make our budget process more concise, better, allow for more folks to speak to it, and so on and so forth. So what you have before you is the, is the internal process of most of the items that have been put forward, not necessarily all of them in general. And I want to try to speak to each of you. So you're looking at the expense requests, material supplies, curriculum instruction from the Teaching and Learning Budget, technology, and then special education's predominating around transportation and tuition increases. And then the district-wide are those things that are encompassing of the district in terms of heating increases, electrical increases, so on. And you see at the bottom number that that comes in about one, a total of a $1.6 million. Again, this is a starting point of what was requested. There's no redundancy here. We've already eliminated that because sometimes what happens in that process in the past is the Teaching and Learning Office and the principals have had the same thing. We've already smoothed out all of that. And we did that in small group meetings with the principal, met with myself, Matt, and Jen, just to kind of go through the process. And then we would do the cross-check right there so that Matt would be able to grab and not have to do it later, which we had some confusion in the past with. The second line, the second area to the right of that is the staff increase requests, of which under two different areas are mandates, and then the regular area are areas of needs. So I want to go through some of that. There's a recommendation for paraprofessionals, full-time for full-day kindergarten. You've seen this about three years ago, I think was the last time. We have some significant issues and concerns about meeting the needs of all students and making sure that a second adult is in the room, in this case, a highly-qualified paraprofessional, to support students. But they're not necessarily there because of mandated special education needs. I want to be clear about that. We have, as you continue to go down, we have the addition of a half-a-band position, which actually goes with the next line below. It's actually to move the teacher to this building full-time along with a full-time wellness teacher, which requires to backfill the half-time band teacher at the hay school. So it's being shown.
So we're adding a half-dan at the middle.
Correct.
To make it full.
Correct.
And then we'll move back to my half at the.
Correct. And there's also a half-time adjustment counselor by the principal requested at this time for the, again, that's not a yes yet. That's just the process of request. I'm sorry.
That's not eager.
That's it here right there. It says .5 AC.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So on the par is just abstracting. So that's seven total for all full days.
Right, so it'll, it's going to depend.
That's just checking.
Right, and the other issue is, do we go full-time or part-time or no-time because of the budget? That's what we have to, one of the things we want to do is provide you that flexibility for the 29th to really take a look at, what does that mean as a number? It's 135,000 full. It might be, we could get away with 75 and start there, and then maybe go for some further money in the fall, as an example. And only as an example. There is a dean of students position, which is a teaching unit position. It is not an administrator at the high school. Unit A, the Norton Teachers Association, has the dean of students in their, currently in their contract. That's, this is a position very much like Mr. Bellauer has had at the Yale School, which we know has been tremendously successful, not only because of the size of the building, but also because of the issues that we have seen with younger children. And then increasing the, a .2A SL position, that's a start. So that would be literally a class, but it could be more. Again, we have to wait until later to see what the enrollment looks like. And then move the second music teacher to full-time. So the reason why I put .2 on there is because we could see a shift in world languages. In other words, French or Spanish could move up or down. In this case, probably down. It'd be, it's moving down one. So therefore, you're picking up maybe two classes, or maybe it's only one class, or maybe it's five classes. We don't know yet. And it'll be based on enrollment. Athletics, there is, there's no request for increased staffing, neither for facilities. Teaching and learning, mandate. We need another English language teacher. At this time, it's full-time. I'm going to continue to look at the numbers to see if it could be cut back a little bit. But we are at 62 students and growing. Interesting enough, as I use all the time, it was 17 when I got here. I use that number all the time because I couldn't believe it was so small, and now we're growing. And that also means we have to provide, with many of our students being beginner-level language students of English. And then we have FLEPS students, former language students, who also need to provide checks in and services as needed.
When you say mandate, you're just talking ESL.
Correct. The second position, the literacy coach, is not a mandate. As you know, we made some changes to that this past year. We were able to move a person into that position. This is the idea here, same, to see if we can flip some. We have, we have some internal candidates very much interested, but we also think that we need the body because the person doing it can't cover all of the buildings that she's covering. It's just not something that's useful. Again, that's a teaching position that is not administrative, neither of those two. And then the 1.1 specials increase. This is art, music, physical, physical education, and where we're moving folks from their current point-whatever into, so these are all increases in FTEs, not a new FTE, so that we can actually provide more of those supports. More physical education, as you know, has been something that I've been really talking about. Should students be getting more of it, this is the only way that we can do it is by increasing those .9 and .8s and .75s, whatever they may be. And I'll break that down for you as the recommendation comes forward.
So that's not, that's not a new position.
No, this is just, this is just taken. If I, if I work four days a week, I'm recommending that, the position's now five days a week. That's all it is.
Is that concentrated in one of the schools, or is it pretty much across?
It's K5.
K5.
Yep. Yep, and again, we'll break this down as we come to the final recommendations. This is something that's been on our budget for four years, and we've cut it as one of the first items to get that, to get our budget to, so just to let you know how long. So this is, this is a goal of ours this year So this is a goal of ours this year because it also creates a sense of not only the students getting more, but it also allows for us to potentially take a look at things like our technology teachers having time to move into the classroom, to support the classroom. As we know, just taking a computer class once a week isn't going to work. We need that integration specialist so the person could potentially still have classroom time, but also have the support time in the classroom when the kids are working with the technology. It also helps with digital citizenship, as we know that's a big topic for all of us. Nothing in communications in terms of increased staffing. Technology has a digital learning specialist for the district. This would be someone who goes into the classrooms district-wide. If we got the positions at the elementary, this position would be predominantly six to 12. But if not, and we couldn't do the other, then we would move this as a K to 12 and then pick the pocket of where we want to go. The second position is a library media specialist. This is a split between the Yale School and the middle school. I can't tell you how devastating it is as an educational leader of the district to walk into Norton Middle School's library and not have a library. It's just, and we know that that's a position that could really support, not only support our classroom, but support the individual needs of students. At the high school, for example, our learning, our library media specialist, for example, works with students, supports students that are taking an online class because it's, there's a conflict in the schedule. So now you have a student who can take an AP class that they can't fit into their schedule or a forensic science class, or Latin, or computer science that they can't fit into their schedule, but they have a block in their schedule that they can use. And that's a wonderful way to support the academic growth of a student. Not only research, the idea of teaching research.
Can I just ask you a question? So high school, we have a full-time?
Yes.
Okay. So middle school, we have nothing?
Correct.
Yale School?
Yale School, we have nothing. And then we split a .8 position between the JCS and the LGM. But that person is in the library, but they're utilized as an instructional period for students so that the general ed teacher can get their prep period. Okay? And then the special education currently has mandates. Our best program will be moving from fifth grade to sixth grade.
These are all mandates.
These are all mandates. These are moving up students, so we need to create, so we have two choices here. We either create our own positions or we start talking about other district placements. A full-time teacher and a para for the eight to 12 students that are coming up is financially better for us, academically better for us, socially better for the students in terms of all the other needs, including travel to and from school and so on and so forth. This is the success, thanks to Jean and her staff, the principals, you supporting it, of going from those nine, 10 classrooms that we had years ago to 20 classrooms in the district. This is 21, because this is not in that form that I gave you a few weeks ago. This would be the 21st classroom that's supporting in some way, shape or form students in the classroom. So when we talk about space of buildings, this is a discussion that needs to take place with people. Because you could have a room this size that was built in 1955 and that is the room that you're using because there is no other room. Or you ship students out, which is, I think, the wrong approach, so reminder of that. To go with the best program would be a full-time para and then a full-time special ed teacher at the high school in order to support inclusion, where we have the need, as some of you are shaking your heads. And then two more para-professionals. These are the para-professionals that we always put into the budget. Every year, they're called, we don't have anyone that we want to hire, but we know at some point in August through the year, we're going to have to hire those positions.
So an example of that would be that we can't always predict the students that are coming to us to Little Lancers from early intervention and we don't always know their needs ahead of time. And this year, for example, we had four students in the past two months that had moved into our severe autism program and we needed to accommodate them. So if we didn't have those positions in reserve, we wouldn't be able to manage that.
The next area, fees. Well, the next area is really salaries. So we have unions and contracts for non-union that have numbers in them, whatever the percentage raise is. And then we have significant two unions, Teachers Association and Para Association, that are currently not under contract agreement for July 1st. So this is where Matt and I have to take a look at what could this look like? So in this particular case, what we're looking at are numbers that encompasses everything to do with longevity, an actual raise, the COLAs, excuse me, the steps and lanes, I'm trying to think of what else, the stipends and so on. It's all-inclusive, if you will. That number, of course, is subject to change because we could come to an agreement between now and, between, in the next meeting, we could come to an agreement, so.
Woo, woo!
We're-
I like that.
Yes. And then the next major issue is fees. All of you have made it very clear to me that we want to have hard discussions about this. So I am putting forward for your consideration a starting point of reducing transportation fees from $350 to $150. That means we've got to move $106,000 into the budget. Okay? The second one, to reduce one of the fees, which is currently $550, to $350 and all of the sports fees.
Sorry, the other way.
South the other way.
The $350 to $200.
Yes, the $350 to 200 and the $550 to 375. Thank you for that. So in other words-
Still no cap, though?
There's still no cap in this proposal, but again, you see that that's $115,000 move. So we're talking about $221,000 between those two that need to go into the budget.
Can I ask how you, did you just simply take the current numbers we have and then reduce the payers by that number?
Yes.
Okay. The only reason I'm asking is because while it's not going to move the needle particularly, there is the possibility that reduced cost actually brings in more than-
That is correct. That's number one. Number two, there's the issue of having to come up with a program where we are not increasing our bus service from 15 current buses to 17 or 19 because people now say it's 150. We're going to have to come a- Yes, in terms, I mean, we need them for what we have.
Yeah.
We don't-
Let's call yellow runs are completely full. We can control that and we can say-
Yes.
We have X buses now and we will continue to have X buses.
That is correct. So what you would have to do is mandated students get first pickings and then it's going to be either come as you come, come first and we just put a timing on it and put them in order and pay first. We'll have to come up with something for that if in fact this gets to that point here. Okay? A couple of other things that I really think are important. I want to thank the principals. They're coming in with real numbers here. These are things that we really need. They're not adding fluff to this. So under those expense line, the first five in particular, I want to thank, it's not because the other ones didn't do their job either, they did. This is a very different approach for our expense line item than we've had in the past. That's one. Here's some concerns. And Jean is standing right next to me and she'll elaborate if she wishes. Some of the concerns. We've had a number of students have to change their placements this year. So go from collaborative to private or even collaborative to collaborative. Change in transportation alone is costs is six figures, $160,000. We've had to absorb that into our budget. Thank goodness we had that flexibility from the $200,000 that we left in the budget, but just think about how we're down to 40 grand and it's fair work. The other part of it is with the continuing per pupil expenditure at this state going up, because it's gone up yet another $500, what that means is we're getting very close to the first $45,000 we own on a student and not a district placement. Not necessarily 43 or 42,000, if you know what I mean here. And will we in fact get the 75% circuit breaker as is being proposed to us? And two, do we get any transportation circuit breaker? Transportation circuit breaker, if done according to the way it's been written, is a quarter of a million dollars. Positive. That's huge money for us in that line item. That's a deal breaker for us in many ways.
But it's also a big yet.
But it's also a big yet. The statute states, as voted by elected officials that we're going, what we're getting is, Desti's basically saying, we have no idea where that money is coming from because that's not included in the chapter 75. So it'll be a discussion. I am meeting to bring you up today, Carolyn, because you brought it up. I am meeting with Senator Feeney in a couple of weeks. I'm actually going to the State House. So I'm hoping at the same time to reach out to Representatives Howitz and Barrows. And they also received a very clear, you know, that the zero-sum game for Norton is zero in terms of our budget because now you're asking me to do a Student Opportunity Act short form. So you're basically saying, hey, school committee, you don't control the 72,000, the state does. And that's what we've been told, the short form just came in, by the way. It's three pages long. It'll be a lot of fun.
So on the special education transportation, that's still a mandate that we don't have any control over, correct? If they're moving-
Yes.
Facilities.
Right. If you look at our budget, you don't have this in front of you, but just for the sake of argument, if you're looking at our budget being a 3% increase, it's just under $900,000. So now you look at the numbers before you and you know you weigh off. If you're at 4%, it's one point, almost 1.2. If you're at 5%, it's almost 1.5. If you're at 6%, it's 6%, it's about 1.797. So that would be the numbers added to our bar. I do have a scheduled meeting with Matt, Mike and James coming up.
The teaching and learning ESL, what's the, doing the number on that?
Each of those is budgeted at $65,000.
$65,000.
And so it could come in at 59, it could come in at 71. And that's part of that issue that happens during the summertime.
When is your meeting?
I don't have it in front of me. February 24th. February 24th.
So although I'd love to see a reduce in fees, I think that that is always very scary.
Yes.
Because you're talking over $200,000 that is going to need to come from somewhere. So where exactly does that come from?
Well, we don't know yet, right? What we're going to do is on our priority list, I have so far from individual members, I've been told, class size reduction and K to three is a priority. We have some thoughts about how to do that.
I think we agree with that.
The second issue that's come up by at least three of you has been the fees as an area of concern. The high school dean position because of all of the discipline that takes place and so on is a third concern. The full-day kindergarten in terms of either higher more teachers or higher paras. And right now, depending on the enrollment, we're going with the paras. But I could be coming back to you three weeks from now and saying, listen, we're projecting this enrollment. We actually need one more teacher that'll keep class sizes at 18. Let's do that instead. Or I could say, listen, we're not going to do that. We're going to have to hire the paras, they're only part-time. Or I could say, we're not hiring because we just can't afford it.
John, I may have missed, I mean, you were just talking about- outside of the special education and the ESL that's mandated, is there anything else in there that's mandated?
Everything under, well, depending on what the final levels look like, everything under the expense request of special education would be significant.
No, no, the special education is mandated, we got that.
Right.
And then we have, on teaching and learning, the ESL is a mandated spot.
That's correct.
Is there anything outside of that that's mandated?
No, it would just be the ESL and then everything under special ed. When you look at priorities, the outside of the mandates, we will come to you this year with those priorities. In other words, are the full-day paras the priority versus the dean versus the, whatever the positions are? And we're just going to have to have some debates and discussions about that. And I'm hoping to go on the road show for that.
The issue that we're having now, people moving collaborative programs, what was the increase there?
On transportation alone, it was $160,000, that was the report I got.
Is there a tuition increase?
There is.
And this is happening this year?
Right now.
And that's a recurring cost, I assume?
That is correct.
Do we have a handle on the tuition increase?
Yes, that's part of our special education expense increase.
Is the transportation here as well?
That's correct.
Oh, thank God.
Yeah. Yes.
So right off the top, we're looking at 630-plus thousand of mandates.
Yeah. It's two, back of the napkin, 2.13% increase is just going to be mandates on this paper.
Yes.
I mean, that's, and we're not going to get 6%.
Yeah, so the question here becomes the continuing discussion on the mandates and then there's a discussion on where does this come from? What do we put off to the fall, which is something that's become regular for both municipal side and town and school side, which was, no, we all know wasn't the norm. But this is, I call this my, you know, kind of like when you're landing a plane, we're like still at 5,000 feet, nobody wants to jump off yet, right? We've still got some time, we got some priorities. I want to do some discussions with some folks about moving some things around. And then we have, how many retirements? What does that look like? That's one. I don't think it's going to be many, by the way. I think, I think- We have a verbal announcement, two verbal announcements, but no commitments. And then the second question becomes, what do the numbers actually look like? We don't know that, we'll find that out from the town in two weeks. So that's where we're at. And I want to thank all the administrators. I want to thank the teachers that were very much involved this year. I think one of the principals actually said it was the most involved year. Those expenses that they asked for are in this budget. They have not been cut. Currently, they're in the budget. So if a teacher said through the principal, I want this, and the principal agreed, it's in the expense line item right now. We were that specific this year, or trying to be that specific. Again, we have no idea if this is going to come to fruition. I'm just going with what we said are our major needs. Okay? If you have questions, feel free to send it to myself or Matt or for any of the administrators if you're looking for more information.
Can we move the budget meeting to the 29th, right?
That's correct. Awesome. By then, we'll have.
Great, thank you. So we'll move to Mr. Bell's vote to award school mini-bus bid.
We went to bid on January 13th for a 12 plus two mini-bus. We received three bids, a low bidder was New England Transit of Tewksbury, Massachusetts, at $20,000, $743.30 for each year, three years. Set a statutory reference check. All bid documents were as necessary. We would recommend awarding this bid.
It was a surprise, everything we got three bids.
Yeah, I was a little surprised too. I, in the past, I've always seen two.
I've only ever known one.
Yeah, so, so, this is for the actual bus, yeah? So per year for three years.
Right, how do you know this happened for this?
We did, yeah.
Oh, we did, okay.
Yeah, this money comes from capital, but we still have to go up the bid.
Right, so you will, you'll present this to capital, then when you guys commit?
Yeah, it's already, it'll be noted that it's, that's going to be a three-year process.
Okay, okay. All right. Do we have to vote on that?
That's correct.
So a motion to approve the award of the school mini-bus bid as presented. Second, all in favor? I propose, motion carries, thank you. And then Dr. Baye, any other business?
Yes, just two things. I did forward and it looks like we have a tentative joint meeting for February 27th with the agenda item being the private citizens article that was put forward and that whole process and our response. I gave you a memo today on project 412 that's in front of you. That's looking at the whole idea of national labor statistics, college placements, career choices for students and really looking at, this is a long-term project. This is not a today to tomorrow. I will be asking for some of you to be part of this discussion and as well as our staff in grades four through 12, administrators, local business folks, higher education, community colleges included. It's an opportunity for us to take a look at not only the idea of further career technical education courses, but also innovation pathways and career pathways for our students, literally starting at fourth through 12th grade. And the idea is where do we start? How much do we go into this? We know that students in our district are graduating at a high rate. They're getting placed at a, high percentage of students continuing their education, including technical two and four-year. We know that more and more so, our students are also starting to enter in careers early on, maybe even technical schools where they're getting some further training. We need to encompass that and put that together so that parents, parents and students are getting more information as early as possible. Nobody's tracking students into anything. It's about choices. Think of a middle school that could provide students with many different elective choices, allow them to dabble in areas before they get to a high school. And maybe a high school that they actually, show you go from exploration in early grades to pathways in high school, making better choices about careers if that's the route that the student wants to go.
That's great, thank you.
Oh, and lastly, sorry. School committee policy with the vaping is going to have to change per legal counsel. They're working on it now. And that will lead to the procedural, if you will, information to you to also have to change. We expect to see that at the next meeting, a regular meeting, and then because it's a policy change, it will require a second reading.
Is there any update on the detection systems?
They're going off like crazy. And we are catching students, quote, catching students. And we're utilizing the resources that we have. It's hard, it's really, really hard. I mean, when you hit, when you get 55 hits in 60 minutes, that's like, who goes there?
What about bathrooms being vandalized still? Is that still happening?
No, it's been quieter, but we did have one small vandalism. We had bigger vandalism early in the year. My concern that I have now is where the vape's going.
Yeah.
BR just closed their bathroom because they were clogging the bathrooms. So hopefully our students that are doing that aren't doing that. We have that in closing thoughts. Yeah, I'm not surprised to hear it. I hate to tell you, but students that are caught with destruction of school property are going to have to pay for the expense of that. The hourly rate and the actual, I mean, that's-
That's appropriate, right, absolutely.
Why would you hate to say that?
Right.
Well, I hate to say it because the idea of, you know, having to close a bathroom and all of that for other students while that's, I mean, that's-
I think now we should make an issue prosecute it.
Yeah. It's above.
On property, you can't do that.
That's all I have, man.
Well, thank you very much.
So I just want to mention one more from today is the 18th annual ITAC, ITAC, ITAC's community. Norton Teachers playing the Norton Police. We have eight high school students as well who are going to be playing. Should be a fun night. We're going to get flyers sent out through the schools. They'll be handling that for us. Stuff is up on the Facebook page. If people are on Facebook, ITAC's community in Norton. You know, just, we do have some needs for families. So if anyone is interested in purchasing tickets or making a donation, everything is up on our Facebook page. Any questions, itacnorton@gmail.com.
Thank you for doing that.
I can't, just as a follow-up, and I know Sherri, that you are a lead person with the ITAC and, but all of the folks that are part of that, just thank you. Because I know this year in particular, I've reached out to you folks probably more so than I have in all the other years that I've been here. And it's really appreciated and all the work that's going on to that night. I've reached out to the president of the college, just, you know,